Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Tractile Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff. Commissioner Lemmy.
Here.
Vice Chair Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
And Chair Stafensen.
Here. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, and Commissioner Allen will be leaving us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We must serve the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, with the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes for, I believe it's August and September? Do there any corrections?
I have ones for September.
Okay. I have one for August, so I'll do mine first. Number eight, the motion to adjourn. That actually came from Commissioner Allen. And was seconded, I believe, by Minkoff. Go ahead, Commissioner Wilcox.
In September 11th, page six, numeral six. Some minor corrections says, but should read East Astoria Columbia Highway, should be East Astoria Columbia River Highway.
Any others?
Just that one.
Of me?
I have one for September, but not this one.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if, on the last page near the bottom, talks about what I noted on page 29, figure seven, so it's about four lines up. Is road the same as Eastman or right away?
What was that, right away?
Is road the same as right away?
Road is not the same.
Road, or O W.
Right away, yes.
Yes, right away.
Oh, that's wide, okay. Sure.
It's shortened, W, yes.
Wouldn't you capitalize that typically?
Capitalize, yes. It should be.
So can we do that in the next line, too?
Oh, yes.
Okay. That be okay?
Yes.
All right. Any other corrections for September? Motion to approve, um, obtain a motion to approve these. I guess we have to take those one at a time.
I know, did we approve the minutes for the office meeting? Okay, I think with.
amended.
Amended, as amended, sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for August 14th, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that one carries. And on to September 11th, motion for those.
I move that we approve the minutes for the September 11th Plan Commission meeting, as amended.
Sorry, I second.
Okay, we beat you. Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for September 11th, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that carries as well. All right. And, so tonight, we have land use application LU-001420241360 Southwest 257th Drive. And this is an application with three variances for multifamily, multifamily development, 15 dwellings, and 45 off-street parking spaces. And before we open the public hearing for this evening, I'd like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedures that will be following for tonight's public hearing. And the Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Tractile citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Tractile residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they're simply making a recommendation to the city council, who renders the final decision. Tonight's application is a Type III quasi-judicial hearing, and the Planning Commission will be the deciding body for that application. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Tractile Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff present their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for all matter under consideration in land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony regarding, relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. As a final note, public hearings are recorded. Therefore, if you wish to speak to the agenda item this evening, we would ask that you fill out a testimony card, which is on the table when you came in, and please state your name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone, please.
Chair Stafensen.
Commissioner Allen.
Just letting you know, I may know the owner, but I'm obviously unaware of their connection.
You may know him?
Well.
Like on Facebook, or?
Well, because I'm a person, but I didn't know this was going on in their lives, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I.
You know him personally?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously not long enough to know what's going on here.
Any challenge? Okay, and, um, the applicant was a pastor at the church that I'm an elder at, which is Mountain View Christian Church in Gresham. A number of years ago, I was not serving on the elder board at the time that the applicant was a pastor at the church, but we were in that same building periodically together. All right, any other ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias from the commission? All right. With that, we'll move forward and open the public hearing for case file LU-001420241360 Southwest 257th Drive. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
All right. Good evening, Commissioner. This is the presentation for LU-00142024. So, set back around, the applicant is Tracy Brown. Address is 1360 Southwest 257th Ave. It is Zoned HDR, High Density Residential. There are no overlays at this site. As far as surrounding uses, it is residential to the north. The zoning is MDR and LDR1. To the east is Zoned LDR2, which is also residential. And there's a medical clinic to the south, Zoned HDR. So here's just the zones visualized. It's easier to see with the colors, I think personally. To note, MDR, LDR1 to the north, LDR2 to the east, HDR to the south. Street view of the subject property. So the applicant's proposal. The applicant is seeking site development review and variance approval for a new multifamily housing development at 1360 Southwest 257th Ave. The proposed project includes 15 dwelling units and 45 off-street parking spaces. Three variances are proposed within this application. So variance one is to reduce the northern side yard setback by 25%. So we're going from a required 20 feet to 15 feet. Variance two, reduce the east rear yard parking setback by 50%. So we're going from a required 20 feet to a proposed 10 feet. And variance three, reduce the size of the required private outdoor space for all upper-level units by 30%. So we're going from a required 60 square feet to a proposed 42 square feet. I think you guys already viewed these. You got these in your packets. It's just the plans from the applicant. I'm gonna show them to kind of refresh your memory, but we're not gonna spend too much time on it right now. Every code provision that involves one of these, you'll have that image in front of you when we get there. All right. What is being asked of Planning Commission? Reel group. What is being requested? A variance in site development review decision for the proposed multifamily development at 1360 Southwest 257th. What is not being requested? A zone change. I'm not gonna read through each one of these. We'll discuss these in greater detail, or you've already read them all and are familiar with it. Obviously, this is a Type III quasi-judicial procedure. We're here in a public hearing. If there is an appeal, it will go to city council. August 17th, 2023, this application came in as a pre-ep. On May 23rd, the applicant submitted application materials. June 24th, the application was deemed complete. June 28th, the notice of public hearing went out to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. August 14th, the public hearing was continued to October 9th, and today is October 9th, and it is a public hearing. If approved, the application will proceed through the permit process. If denied, the applicant may resubmit and restart the review process. If the continuance is granted, the applicant can revise their submittals per PC's discussion for review at a date certain. We received agency comments from Public Works, Multnomah County Transportation, Mid-County Lighting, and Gresham Fire and Emergency Services. We also received two public comments within the comment deadline. The two public comments were both fairly broad and had the same message. There is a general opposition to the development, primarily citing concerns over property values or the effect of this development on the nearby properties and their value. As staff, that's not an element of the development code I can respond to, so that's not something we're reviewing today. And here is the SDR portion. So the approval criteria we're looking at will be Section 6.9208. I'll read them as we get to them, but just know there are four. And after those four, there's this one. If applicable design standards are proposed to be adjusted, the proposed adjustments, and then A, B, and C, those are more or less the variance criteria which we'll go over. So we'll start with the first approval criteria of the site development review. The application complies with all applicable provisions of the underlying zone and overlay zones, including but not limited to building and yard setbacks, lot area and dimensions, density and floor area, lot coverage, building height, building orientation, architecture, and other applicable standards or variance or adjustment is granted. I combined these all in one slide. I'd argue they're very clear and objective. They're either met, or they're not. In this case, the use is permitted. The zone is HDR. The lot size, minimum lot size, it's permitted. The requirement for 15 dwelling units is 41,000 square feet. The subject parcel is 41,000 square feet. The subject site meets the minimum lot width, lot depth, lot frontage, and is within our height limitation for the zone, which is 33 feet they're proposing, 35 feet's the max. Front yard setback, there is a minimum of 20 feet. The applicant's site plan demonstrates 20-foot front setback from 257th. Those criteria is met. Adjoining the HDR zoning district or a non-residential zoning district, the minimum side yard setback is five feet. Finding the southern side setback adjoins the HDR district, resulting in a side setback requirement of five feet. The applicant has provided a site plan that demonstrates 10 feet of space from the south property line to the closest structure. And that is a partial finding. That's one side of the setback. Here's the other side. Before I read this, I'm gonna show you some graphics to help this finding make sense. To the north of the subject parcel is MDR and LDR1. You look here, the orientation slightly skewed, but to the left you see MDR and LDR1. There is one building that straddles MDR and LDR1, and that building is proposed two stories in height. The other buildings are proposed three stories. All right. So adjoining a different residential zoning district for two-story construction, two times the minimum required side yard setback of the adjoining residential district, but not less than 15 feet. And for three-story or greater construction, three times the minimum required side yard setback of the adjoining residential district, but not less than 20 feet. So, the northern side setback abuts the LDR1 and MDR residential zones. The buildings adjacent to the MDR zones are three stories, and the building adjacent to the LDR zone is two stories. The required side setback of the three-story buildings is three times the MDR required side yard setback, which is five, which results in a 15-foot setback. Because the above provision states that the setback may not be less than 20 feet, the required setback of the three-story buildings abutting the MDR zone is 20 feet. Now, the two-story building, which abuts the MDR and LDR1 zone, per TRITAIL Development Code, Section 17090, conflicting regulations, when conditions imposed by this code contradict one another, the more restrictive provision shall govern. In this case, the LDR1 zone offers the more restrictive requirement with a side setback of 10 feet. Two times 10 results in a 20-foot setback. The required side setback for the three-story and two-story buildings is 20 feet. The applicant's site plan demonstrates a 15-foot setback, which does not meet the minimum required setback. This applicant has admitted a Type III variance request as part of his application. As such, this criteria can be met with variance approval. That's a bestie way to get to a setback. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Allen?
Are we basically saying if they move the property five feet to the south, they're within limits?
Sorry?
Well, they require five feet on one side, and they're 10. And they require 20 on the other, and they're 15. Are we saying that if they move the whole thing five feet to the south, they're within requirements?
It could be. I haven't looked at it too much. There are, to the south, that kind of hatched area behind the buildings. They're using as a required private outdoor space for the ground level units. So that space is being used, but I haven't looked at that. All right. And the rear yard setback, when adjoining a different residential district, the minimum rear yard setback is one and a half times. That's for two-story and greater construction. The minimum rear yard setback of the adjoining residential district, but not less than 20 feet. Finding the subject property abuts the LDR2 zone, which has a rear yard setback of 20 feet, based on the above provision, one and a half times 20 results in a required rear setback of 30 feet. As demonstrated on the site plan, both buildings will be located within this 30-foot required setback. All right, we'll look at criteria two. Their proposal includes required upgrades, if any, to existing development that does not comply with the applicable land use district standards, pursuant to Section 5.300, non-conforming uses. Finding the subject property currently does not have any non-conforming uses. And number three, the proposal complies with all of the other applicable site design and development standards of this code, such as landscaping and parking. So we are not gonna go through every finding related to number three. They're quite substantial. So I've left out the ones that I think are clear and objective, which is a yes or no, essentially a check of the box. We're looking at the findings that have conditions created from them, or the findings that relate to the variances. But if you have any questions with any of the other findings, feel free to bring them up. So 8.060A6 and 7, at least 75% of the required landscaping area shall be planted with a suitable combination of trees, shrubs, or evergreen ground cover. It goes into plant material. Finding the submitted plans and applicant narrative demonstrate that at least 75% of the landscaping area shall be in accordance with the two above provisions. However, not all of the vegetation species are specified. A landscaping plan will be required at the time of building permit submittal to confirm compliance with these sections. This criteria can be met, can be conditionally met. 8.060B1, garbage and recycling container enclosures, screening. All enclosures for garbage and recycling containers must be screened from public view. Screening shall consist of six-foot-high wall fences constructed of any of the following materials: cyclone fencing and slats, wooden fencing, concrete blocks, or other materials other than the above mentioned as approved on a case-by-case basis. Finding the site plan shows a 10 by 16 square foot trash and recycling enclosure that is constructed with wood fencing and a lashing gate. The applicant's narrative and plans do not include details regarding the height of the fence. Per the above provision, the height of the garbage and recycling enclosure shall be six feet in height. This condition, this criteria can be conditionally met. 8.150B4B, the wall of a building that faces a public street shall incorporate architectural features, including but not limited to at least three of the following: porches, balconies, dormer windows, recesses of alcoves, or unique entry areas. Finding, per the submitted architectural elevations, the building facing the public street, as displayed to the right, does not contain at least three of these elements. The applicant shall revise the side of each building to ensure three of the listed items can be met. This criteria can be conditionally met. 8150B5C, side and rear yard setbacks for parking lots and/or garages shall be the same as the minimum building setback of the underlying zoning district, or the same as the minimum building setback of any adjacent residential zoning district, whichever is more restrictive. Side and rear yard setbacks based on building height shall not be applied to the parking lots or the access driveways. Finding the parking lot is located further than 20 feet from the northern side property line, and is located further than 10 feet, which is the required south side yard building setback, from the south side property line. The parking lot is compliant with the minimum building side yard setbacks for the southern lot. And then, continued, the required rear yard setback of the adjacent zone is 20 feet. The required rear yard setback of the base zone, disregarding the building height multiplier, is 20 feet. Because the base zone and the adjacent zones' required setback standards are the same, the rear parking lot setback shall be 20 feet. The site plan shows the parking lot to be 10 feet from the rear property line, which does not meet the requirement of this section. The applicant has requested a variance as a part of their application to reduce the rear off-street parking setback to 10 feet. The findings for the variance can be found further in this report. This criteria can be met with variance approval. All right. 8150B6B, each upper-level unit shall have an attached outdoor private space, such as a balcony, of not less than 60 square feet in area. The area shall be enclosed, screened, or otherwise designated to provide privacy from adjacent units by walls, building offsets, or similar site obscuring screen. Finding, the submitted plans show the upper-level units having 42 square feet of private outdoor space. The applicant has requested a variance as a part of their application to reduce the requirement of upper-level required outdoor space to 42 square feet. This criteria can be met with variance approval. All right. 8150B7A, recreation areas, recreation facilities or open space areas are required for attached dwelling developments that contain six or more dwelling units on one lot. Such recreational facilities and open space areas must be located on the development site or on a lot adjacent to the site. Common recreation areas, whether indoor, outdoor, or both, shall be provided at a rate of at least 200 square feet per dwelling unit. No more than 50% of the required recreation area may be in passive open space. Recreation facilities may include children's play structures and play equipment, and shall be located outside be located outside of bioswale detention ponds, steep slopes, or a vegetation corridor as defined in this code. More than one recreation area may be developed on the site. Any play structure exceeding ten feet in height must comply with the underlying zoning district setbacks. Finding, this development proposes more than six dwelling units attached to one another, and therefore this provision is applicable. Their proposal includes fifteen dwelling units, resulting in a required three thousand square feet of required recreation facilities and open space. The submitted plans show two recreation areas totaling three thousand seven hundred twenty-six square feet in total area, along with a large pet area. The applicant is not proposing recreation area within bioswales, detention ponds, deep slopes, earth, and our ECO. It's difficult to determine if no more than fifty percent of the required outdoor recreation area is passive open per the above requirement. The applicant will need to provide details on what the recreation areas will be composed of. Any play structure that exceeds ten feet in height shall comply with the base zone setback standards. This criteria can be conditionally met. And those are the areas, the recreation areas we were talking about. We have residential off-street parking space requirements. So in this case, CFEC comes into play, OAR six sixty zero twelve zero four three zero. Per the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules, the city may not require more than one off-street parking space per unit in residential developments with more than one dwelling unit on a single legally established lot. Additionally, the city may not require parking for residential units smaller than seven hundred fifty square feet. Finding, the proposed development has fifteen dwelling units, seven of which are under seven hundred fifty square feet. Therefore, the minimum required off-street parking for this development is eight off-street parking spaces. The submitted plans show forty-five total parking spaces, twenty-one are standard, fourteen are compact, eight are garage spaces, and two are ADA. The forty-five provided parking spaces exceeds the minimum requirement of eight. We have one other item from CFEC, OAR six sixty zero twelve zero four one zero, electric vehicle charging. For new multifamily residential buildings with five or more residential dwelling units, and new mixed-use buildings consisting of privately-owned commercial space and five or more residential dwelling units, cities shall require the provision of electric service capacity as defined in ORS four five five four one seven to serve forty percent of all vehicle parking spaces. The submitted plans currently show a vehicle charging station that can accommodate two vehicle spaces, which is forty percent, four percent of the total parking, which does not meet the above requirement. At the time of building permit submittal, the applicant shall submit, shall indicate that forty percent of all vehicle parking spaces can comply with the above provision. This criteria can be conditionally met. Nine zero four five B. Parking areas shall be divided into bays of not more than twenty parking spaces in parking areas with twenty or more spaces. Between and at the end of each parking bay, there shall be planters which have a minimum width of five feet and be at least seventeen feet in length. Each planter shall contain one major structural tree and ground cover which can be deemed appropriate by the director. Rec parking and loading areas are exempt from this requirement. Finding, the parking area contains no bays with more than twenty parking spaces. The proposed parking area contains the above required planters for the middle parking island. The parking located on the north, south, and east are surrounded by landscaping. The applicant shall submit a landscaping plan at the time of building permits submittal to confirm the proposed tree species is compliant with this code. This criteria can be conditionally met. These two are regarding a drainage plan and lighting plan. There was a preliminary stormwater plan, but Public Works wants some more substantial information at the time of submittal, permit submittal. And the lighting provision also, it just requires a lighting plan at the time of submittal, which are both conditions. So, number four of the approval criteria, the proposal meets all existing conditions of approval for the site or use as required by prior land use decisions as applicable. Finding, there are no existing conditions of approval or prior land use decisions that apply to this proposed development. This criteria is met. And so, B two, it says if applicable, design standards are proposed to be adjusted. The proposed adjustment is justified due to unique site conditions, conforms to the extent practical with the design standards, mitigates potential impacts from the adjustment to the extent practical. Finding, the applicant has applied for variances for all proposed adjustments to design standards. This criteria can be met with variance approval. Any questions so far? We're going kind of fast, but I think that's all right.
Commissioner Allen?
So, we're saying that the requirement is eight spaces, right?
The minimum.
The minimum, yeah. And one of the things when we get these developments, the thing that we worry about quite a bit is overflow parking going into neighborhoods and causing friction amongst neighbors, right? But are we saying that because this applicant is wanting to put in more spaces, they have to put in more electric charging stations?
It's based on the parking provided.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
So, basically, we've got a law to follow that discourages parking spaces.
If that's how you're interpreting it?
Well, it's more expensive to put in a station, right? And if I were a developer, I would go, well, I don't want to put in that many charging stations, I'm just going to generally put in eight parking spaces than I put.
They're also not required to put in all the charging stations.
Correct.
They're required to.
Have the electrical capacity.
Yeah, the conduit.
The conduit and the capacity for them.
Not exactly cheap, but I understand.
No, I, I know what you're saying. It's cheaper, I guess is the only thing I can say about it.
My old comments, we can move on.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah. So on that note, I mean, if it's at four percent, we're looking at ten times as many, which is, what, about twenty more, twenty spaces total that we're looking at for the number that would need to be running for conduit, essentially?
Yeah, if we end up with forty-five spaces total.
Okay. And I know we kind of, like I said, kind of breezed through it, but just to clarify with the island and trees and whatnot, is that applicable because there is not necessarily a bank of twenty, meaning everything still applies because they did include an island in there?
Yeah. So for that, the, the condition was, part of the codes talks about like species of what type of vegetations planted there, and there's some requirements. So the condition is, we need a landscaping plan at the time of building permits submittal?
Okay.
Just so we can confirm what's being planted and where.
But it did say that it requires both a tree and ground cover for that?
Yeah.
Okay. And landscaping, I got it, okay. I guess if we're going to go over the specifics of variances on it?
Yeah.
Okay. It's all for you.
All right. All right, sorry. Planning commission may grant a variance under the type-three procedure if the request involves expansion or reduction of a quantifiable provision in this code by more than fifteen percent, or if the request is referred to the planning commission in accordance with Section six point one three three five of this chapter. The variance shall be granted only if the planning commission determines that the criteria in Section six one three one five of this chapter are met. So the four approval criteria, A, the special circumstance or conditions, including but not limited to, lot size, lot shape, topography, or size or the shape of building apply to the property development or to the intended use, and are not typical of the general conditions in the surrounding area. B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood, or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision from which a variance is sought. D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve, relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimize the resulting hardship. So, variance one, the applicant has requested relief from the side yard setback requirement for the northern side yard. Three one three zero E seven BI, minimum required side yard setback is twenty feet. The applicant requests a twenty-five percent reduction in the standard and asks for a fifteen-foot minimum required side setback. So, the graphic shows where it's occurring. Applicant wants fifteen feet, the code says twenty feet. Criteria A, that's relating to the special circumstance. Finding, the applicant indicates that the subject property is oddly configured with an appendage located at the southeast corner of the lot in such a way that constrains development. The appendage is roughly three thousand square feet in area and is roughly thirty feet wide. The minimum rear yard setback for this appendage and the rest of the parcel is thirty feet. Because the width of the appendage is roughly the same size of the required setback, the parcel contains roughly three thousand square feet of land that cannot be used towards housing a structure or parking area. The southeastern appendage makes the subject property uniquely shaped in a matter that is atypical of the general conditions of the surrounding area and creates difficulties for development. There we are. I lighted it orange, that's the appendage we're talking about. Criteria B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood. Finding, within the narrative, the applicant affirms that reducing the northern side yard setback to fifteen feet will not be injurious to adjacent properties, the surrounding neighborhood, or be detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant's site plans indicate a wooden six-foot good neighbor fence to be installed along the border of the abutted parcels to the north, an additional wooden six-foot good neighbor fence to be installed at the boundaries of each ground-level unit. Not only will these fences contribute to site obscuration, but the fences dampen the sound of the tenants as well. With a fifteen-foot side yard setback, the proposed building will be at least forty-five feet from the nearest adjacent dwelling on the northern property line. A five-foot reduction in the required northern side setback is not anticipated to be detrimental to the public welfare, nor be injurious to adjacent properties. Criteria C. The variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision from which the variance is sought. So the general purpose and intent of Section three one three zero E seven DEI is to ensure that when HDR zone properties abut differing residential zones, the abutting zone setbacks are considered in determination of the subject property zone. If the variance is authorized, the proposed northern side yard setback is still greater than the side setback of the abutting zones. The abutting zones are LDR two and MDR, where the side yard setback have seven point five feet and five feet respectively. The applicant's proposed setback of fifteen feet is equal to double the required setback standards of the adjacent properties to the north, which considers the setbacks of the northern abutting zone. Criteria is met. And D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty. Finding, in the narrative, the applicant notes that the subject property has site constraints via the southeastern appendage and requires a reduction in the north property line side yard setback. The applicant states that they considered shifting the project south, but are unable to do so due to the other setback requirements and the minimum private outdoor space requirements, and the necessity to provide adequate parking for tenants. The variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the constraints imposed by the southeastern appendage. This criteria is met. Are there any questions with variance number one?
When you say questions, does that mean ask it?
Uh, no, not yet.
Not yet.
Commissioner Allen?
On the, on the pet area. Did they need to call that a pet area, or is it just pretty much just grassy?
That's what they're calling it.
That's what they're calling it, but they didn't have to, doesn't it?
They didn't have to, no.
Okay.
With those, those two recreation areas meet the required open space, so what they're doing with the pet area is, is extra, essentially.
Okay. So it's, yeah, I was, I was just concerned initially when I saw the pet area, that it, that's like, you know, it's, it's just, they didn't have to do it in the first place. The reason why I was concerned is that it's primarily on, was that lot four with some overlay into lot three? Eight, eight dwellings with the pet area there, that close to other houses. I was just concerned that's, that could be a lot of pets. And could we put a quieter fence or something, or?
Yeah, you could have that as a, as a condition if you guys go that direction.
That's only if they're calling it a pet area, which they don't want to do, right? So, I'll need, I'll need advice from the others when we get further into this.
All right. So variance number two, the applicant has requested relief from the required rear yard parking setback. Eight one five zero B five C states that off-street parking shall meet the minimum required building setbacks, which is twenty feet for the rear setback. The applicant requests a fifty percent reduction from the standard and asks for a ten-foot rear setback for the off-street parking area. All right, so, first criteria, criteria A deals with demonstrating a special circumstance. Finding, the applicant states that they believe a special circumstance exists related to lot size, shape of the lot, and other requirements that are not typical of the general conditions in the surrounding area, and that the lot is severely constrained in an east-west direction by the required building and parking setback to two fifty-seventh AV. Staff disagrees with the applicant that the setback on two fifty-seventh AV can be characterized as a unique or special circumstance, given that any multifamily development will be beholden to the same setback requirements and are, as such, not special. However, staff concurs that the lot is oddly configured, in that it has a southeastern appendage that constrains development, because the appendage is roughly three thousand square feet in area and roughly thirty feet wide. The minimum required rear yard setback for this appendage is thirty feet because the width of the appendage is roughly the same size of the required setback. Has roughly three thousand square feet of land that cannot be used towards housing a structure or parking area. Southeastern appendage makes the subject property uniquely shaped in a matter that is atypical of the general conditions of the surrounding area and creates difficulties for development. This criteria is met.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Is that extra area included with the rec areas to combine for that total of three thousand?
No.
This is completely aside from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Variance criteria B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties. Finding, the applicant states that the proposed ten-foot setback will not be injurious to the adjacent properties or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant's narrative and site plan demonstrate that the building will remain compliant with the required rear yard setback, and that this proposed setback variance is only for five off-street parking spaces. The site plan shows a six-foot wooden good neighbor fence that traverses the eastern property line and provides site obscuration and sound. The plans also show a row of provided trees and autumn-laced mabels along the eastern property line to provide further site obscuration in addition to the fence. The applicant's request is not anticipated to be detrimental to the public welfare, nor injurious to the surrounding neighborhood. As such, this criteria is met. C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision from which a variance is sought. The general purpose and intent of eight one fifty B five C is to separate land uses and allow light and air between buildings. The applicant's proposal to install a six-foot wooden fence in addition to a landscape buffer of trees ensures there will be adequate separation and buffer to maintain the general intent and purpose of the setback. As such, the criteria is met. D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimize the resulting hardship. Finding, the applicant states that the requested, oh, sorry, setback reduction is the minimum Setback reduction is the minimum necessary to allow the proposed development on the site. A variance may be granted for hardships related to atypical lot size and shape, however, the hardship may not be self-imposed. In this case, staff argues the hardship is self-imposed due to the amount of parking that will be provided in this proposed development. Per OAR 6600120430, the proposed development shall provide a minimum of eight off-street parking spaces. The applicant is providing 45 total parking spaces for 15 dwelling units, which provides significantly more off-street parking than two spaces per unit. While it is likely that each of the primary units may have two cars, it is unlikely that each of the smaller units will have two cars or that, as they are of a size that fits one resident, roughly 556 square feet in area. Staff believes a parking lot reconfiguration can occur to ensure compliance with the parking setback and still provide ample parking for future tenants and guests. Staff disagrees that a variance is the only relief that can be offered. As such, this criteria is not met. Any questions about this?
On the slide before this one, you talk about putting up a six-foot wooden fence. There's already existing fences there, I was wondering, you know, it's a good idea to put a fence up against a fence.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, that's a good thing to bring up.
No, I think there's six.
Are there six?
I think there's six. Commissioner Allen?
This is probably the first time you ever kind of hear me say this, because I've never said it before. Yeah, they have a lot more parking than they likely need. Now, I don't agree with the minimums, of course, I've never had, but it's more than ample parking. I mean, you could, you have really sociable people that have all their friends and guests.
Can't deliver that yet, gentlemen.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Would it be unreasonable to ask then, since we have a plant, arboretum, and trees along the backside to help sight obscure, to ask, to put in more mature trees and not the little ones, you know, like the two-foot ones, but a little taller so they grow up quicker?
Yeah, that could be something you guys discuss as a condition. All right.
You good?
And variance request number three. The applicant has requested relief from the minimum required private outdoor space for upper-level units. 8150B6B states that upper-level units shall have 60 square feet of private outdoor space. The applicant requests for a 30% reduction from this requirement and asks to provide 42 square feet of private outdoor space for upper-level units. All right, so, variance criteria A, relating to special circumstance. Finding, the applicant states that achieving the required 60 square foot of private outdoor space for each upper-level unit is practically challenging to achieve. The applicant argues that the provided 42-square-foot private outdoor space in the site plan are specifically designed to cantilever over the driveway in a safe, unobstructive manner. If the applicant were to achieve the 60-foot, 60-square-foot area, they have concerns related to the functionality of the garage below. The applicant further states that it is not practically possible to provide 60-foot private outdoor space for the upper-level units, and therefore requests to provide 42 square feet of private outdoor space. As such, this criteria is met. Criteria B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties. Finding, per the site plans and applicant narrative, the decks impacted by this variance request are primarily visible from within the confines of the subject parcel. The applicant providing 18 square feet less of balcony will be in no way injurious to adjacent property owners nor detrimental to the public welfare. C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision. Finding, the general purpose and intent of the provision of providing private outdoor space is to provide an amenity for the guests. Granting a 30% reduction in upper-level private outdoor space will still achieve the general purpose and intent of this provision, as the amenity is still being provided in a practical and usable fashion. Additionally, the proposed development is providing recreation open space that surpasses the minimum requirement. So we were talking about that dog area, but that's not being counted towards a recreation area. So there's a significant, I'll say abundance, of just passive area. That's what we're referring to here. Staff believes that the outdoor space lost by granting this variance can be made up by the ample common outdoor space that is proposed to be provided. D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty. Finding, per the applicant's narrative, the explanation of the special circumstance, the requested variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the demonstrated practical difficulty. As such, this criteria is met. Any questions with variance three? All right. Staff recommendation, based upon review of the applicant's submittal, review of the applicable code, and agency comments, staff finds the proposed variance to reduce the east yard parking setback by 50% from 20 feet to 10 feet does not comply with the required standards in approval criteria, specifically sections 8150B5C and 6135D, and cannot be reasonably conditioned to comply. Therefore, staff recommends denial of LEU00142024 and to adopt the findings for noncompliance with TDC8150B5C and TDC6135D. However, if the commission determines that the applicant has met the requirements of 6135D, which is the variance approval criteria, the commission can revise the findings of the section and approve application LEU0142024. As an alternative, the applicant may choose to revise the application to meet the rear yard setback requirement, which could include reconfiguring the site plan to come into compliance with section 8150B5C. Under this scenario, the applicant would need to revise and resubmit their site plans for review. The applicant should note that the application timeline for final decision is December 4th, 2024. An extension to the 120-day rule may be granted upon the applicant's request, and the hearing schedule to a date certain. So our conditions of approval, we went through each of these earlier, so I'm not going to re-go over them. The first two are boilerplate, which you guys have seen a few times, and three through eight, we all discussed earlier in the presentation. So, Public Works. Applicant shall abandon the existing water service to the site as directed by and in collaboration with city forces. Two, applicant shall install the commercial water service assembly meter, fire line, and fire backflow protection vault to serve the site. Installation will occur in the existing easement and will require a utility permit from the city. Applicant shall coordinate closely in advance with the affected residents. Three, the applicant shall decommission any existing private water wells on the site in accordance with Oregon Water Resource Department requirements. Four, applicant shall decommission any existing underground storage and/or septic tanks on the property in accordance with the EQ requirements. Applicant Five, applicant shall submit with the building permit applications a detailed stormwater management report demonstrating compliance with PSWMM, including supporting All UICs shall be registered or permitted through DEQ in accordance with DEQ requirements, and they require pretreatment prior to infiltration. Seven, the applicant shall prepare and submit an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater quality facility prior to receiving a CFO. Eight, applicant shall cure all existing defects in the public sidewalk on the frontage of the property prior to CFO. Multnomah County Transportation. We went through a road rules variance for approval of the access. Part of the conditions on that variance are the county's comments for this development. So, one, the road rules variance is only effective on approval of the corresponding land use application on the city of Troutdale. Only effective on approval of the corresponding land use application of the city of Troutdale. Two, this road rules variance decision expires two years from the effective date. A must condition through is satisfied and/or corresponding land use decision becomes ineffective. Three, the applicant will need to ensure that the sidewalks along site frontage on southwest 257th Ave are six feet wide, and curb ramps and slopes, particularly at the driveway entrance, meet current ADA requirements. And they have some general permitting information below for the applicant. Mid-County Lighting. Per the district's administrative rules, the applicant will be required to submit a lighting level review to the Multnomah County Permit Portal. I won't read the rest, that's the majority of it. Aggression Fire, it's a lot of boilerplate comments. We received these comments pretty late, and the majority of them deal with location of fire hydrants, which can be addressed at the time of building permits and middle, so I won't give through all of them.
What's the current right-of-way in the site?
What do you mean?
How much is right-of-way?
On 257th.
About 80 feet?
Eighty for that property.
The right-of-way of 257th?
Yeah, but to that property.
Like the street frontage?
Yes, at 80 feet.
Oh.
80 feet presently. Do they have 80 feet, or are they going to have to dedicate to make 80 feet?
Like how much street frontage does the property have?
Yep, so, Multnomah County did not make them dedicate.
Okay.
So there's enough right-of-way on 257th for any sort of new improvements.
Well, I have to restart. There we are. And their comments continued. Any questions?
Do we want to talk about the item that came out today that ink's still wet on?
Yeah, so the applicant, today, early this afternoon, did submit additional information on the site plan. So we have a new site plan in. That new site plan was forwarded to all of the commissioners this evening. But since we have new information from the applicant regarding that site plan, our recommendation this evening would be to continue with the public hearing process. We can hear from the applicant this evening, and we can hear from anybody in the audience that wants to give testimony. But then, since staff, since we haven't had time to review the new submittal and analyze it to ensure that it's meeting, you know, our code or, you know, our variance approval, we would then recommend continuing the public hearing to a date certain. So that would allow us to get this new information on the website, but for people to look at and for us to do an additional review process and to come back later with newer updated findings for the commission to review. So that's kind of, that's just the process that I would recommend for this evening.
Okay. And before we go any further, is the applicant wishing to present this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Wilcox?
Does this mean it's the appropriate time to ask about non-variance issues?
You could, or you could wait till after we hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Commissioner Allen?
I have a technical question, but I don't know if it's appropriate time. So it's about this development is requiring variances at this point in time. Now, when the state's 2019 rules come into place, am I reading this correct, that these variances will no longer apply at that point and our density development could come into its place?
What are you referring to?
In 2019, the state had new development requirements that the cities have to follow, right?
Was that the middle, was that in the middle housing?
Was that?
Yeah.
2001.
Hospital 2001.
Okay.
Yes, 2001, it was done in 2019, but it's Hospital 2001. But anyway, that changes everything, doesn't it?
Well, these variances are considered within the requirements of 2001.
Okay.
So we factored 2001 into this, and it still requires the variances.
Oh, okay. That's what I needed to know.
Yeah. Now, I will say, with that said, the governor by executive order has mandated what's called CFAC. And any residential multifamily development, basically, no matter what size the unit, requires one parking spot off-street. And so this development, within those standards, we can only require that there be eight off-street parking spaces for this development. If it's, if the applicant elects to follow those standards to the letter of the law, correct?
Correct. So, CFAC states that eight parking spaces would be the minimum. The applicant could always put in, choose to put in more.
As much as, so we can only require eight. The applicant can put in more, but we can only require eight. And so that, that's an interesting place to be.
Yes, basically, based on what you just said, that if this applicant decides to pump and not do it, sells to another person, right? Just like previous almost did, then we could get a higher density development too, because less space is going to be required. At least more room to have your setbacks and be denser.
Yeah. You could still end up with a project that has variances. You could still end up with a lot of things, but as far as the parking, the new theory is that most people don't drive a car. I mean, it's kind of that simple. Or, you know, one car per household or whatever.
It's like the neapal way for some reason, yeah.
So I think that's just something that we all need to consider, is that's where things can go. Because I know that there's always a concern with these, because I have a concern with it, that potential there could be spill-off into a neighboring residential area for parking, and that can create its own set of problems when that happens.
It's a real concern.
Yeah, as much as we can, within the letter of the law, we try to... Yeah, as much as we can, within the letter of the law, we try to mitigate these things and we try to take testimony and do everything we can to make something that works for the community.
This, so what I'm seeing is this can become a higher-density project.
It's possible.
And there would be, I think we could do another.
It's possible.
Fifteen dwelling units on the size of that lot?
It is the max.
That's the max density, so you won't see, with our existing code, you won't see a proposal for sixteen dwelling units because we wouldn't permit that. So fifteen's already the maximum.
Yeah, but this is eight, right?
It's fifteen dwelling units.
It's fifteen.
Yeah.
They can't put in more buildings just because they have space when they park in spaces.
Right. But they could put in less parking.
So density's already being maximized in this case.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, if there's no other questions at this time, I would like to invite the applicant to come forward, please.
So I just have to take?
Yeah. And sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, great.
My name's Tracy Brown and my address is 17075 Fur Drive in Sandy. So this isn't happening. So I should just speak loud enough? I'm not sure if there's a microphone.
There is.
Oh, there's the microphone.
I'm off the radio.
There we go. All right, yeah, thank you very much for having us today. I'm the applicant, the owner, Mike Holstead. He also has another project on Southwest Cherry Park. It's called the Southwood Cherry Park Luxury Apartments. So he has experience and, you know, from what I can tell is, you know, he does a good job of managing his property. And that's why parking is kind of near and dear to him. He knows from experience that in order to have a successful project, he's going to have to provide adequate parking. So I appreciate Nick's thoroughness of review of the staff report. So I'd just like to go through just a few things and address the couple of items that I've noted. In general, the applicant agrees with all of the conditions that are being proposed. I guess the primary recommendation of denial of the one variance kind of is creating a fatal flaw in the project, as it seems. And so we're wanting to work with the city to, you know, find if there's a, you know, kind of a solution to make that work. And that's why the material we submitted today, and I can go through that maybe just to kind of give an overview of what it is. And I understand the staff recommendation is to continue the hearing, which I think we're fine with. So again, we, you know, appreciate that. So as is mentioned, the proposal is to build fifteen apartment units and two buildings. So all the buildings will have two units except the one building, we just have one unit in it. So that's why the kind of the odd number of buildings, because the maximum density, as was noted, is fifteen units. He is proposing to include a little over four thousand square feet of shared recreation area, and we understand the need to kind of identify where that is and what is being proposed. We did provide a sketch of that also, and, you know, he's kind of, some of the amenities he'd like to put in is a little barbecue area, picnic table, a small play structure, and maybe a disc golf basket, just for practicing, you know, putting or something like that, in addition to the play or the pet area. So that, it would include, so we'll provide additional details of all those amenities. So as was noted, that there was three variants requested. The first variance was to reduce that side yard or the northern setback from twenty feet down to fifteen feet. And staff went through an analysis of that and has recommended that is being approved or that be approved. There was a question about shifting the whole project, and I asked the applicant about that. And like was noted, there is, on that south side, there is a requirement to provide the private outdoor space per unit. So on the upper story units, we're requesting to reduce that because those would be smaller units, but there essentially would be a small backyard for each of the ground floor units. And part of that area is along that south setback adjacent to the other high-density residential property just to the south. I believe there is also a water line easement along there, but I need to confirm that as well, because I asked the question, could we shift it to resolve this? And there was a couple of different reasons why that is problematic, thus the request for the variance. The second variance was to allow the, basically five parking spaces. There was three compact spaces and two ADA spaces to encroach into that rear yard setback. And the reason for that was, you know, essentially to try to maximize as much as possible parking, you know, from his experience. I do want to note that those properties or those lots on the other side of that fence to the east were granted a variance to their rear yard setback as part of the subdivision approval that was done in 2016. And so they were reduced from twenty feet, which is the typical setback for that zone, down to fifteen feet. And so in this case, we're requesting the parking, not any of the structures, to be encroached into that setback. But we do, we are flexible in that regard and we can shift those spaces to the west, preferably five feet, so there would be a fifteen-foot setback rather than a ten-foot setback there if necessary. Staff reviewed it and found that the criterion D, the minimum necessary to relieve the practical difficulty, they couldn't find that it met that criteria. I mean, I think it could possibly go either way and you can, I think you could find that it does meet the criteria if you so choose. The requirements of the CFAC, actually that is the first I've ever heard of this. I have done quite a bit of work in Gresham and other cities, but I haven't run across that. And so when Nick pointed out that, you know, the minimum parking the city can require is eight spaces, I was like, what? Are you kidding me? That seems, I didn't know if ridiculous is the right word, but that was probably the word that came to my mind.
It's a good word.
With fifteen apartments, only eight spaces, really? I mean, I could see that in downtown Portland maybe, but we're out in Troutdale. Anyway, so we did look at, in that revised kind of tentative plan, shifting those parking spaces to the west a little bit to create a fifteen-foot setback. And with that, we would be basically losing eight spaces. So we would still be at thirty-seven spaces. And I guess one thing that the owner did note, eight of the ground floor units do have garages. And as, you know, it's probably, we're all aware, those garages can be used for parking or storage. And his experience is that with his other project where he has garages, that maybe a third of the garages are actually used for parking. You know, they're a great amenity for the residents of that unit, but they're, I don't know if they can be counted one hundred percent for parking. So I guess with that, we would still be about thirty spaces or more, which he felt was adequate by making that shift if you think it was necessary. The other option would be to keep it as it is and we would end up with forty-five, total of forty-five. So we'd like to work with you on that. The final option was the deck size, and as Nick pointed out, there were some limitations that the applicant was concerned about with the headroom and if those upper-story decks extended too far out, they might conflict with people using the garages and things like that. So he wants to keep the buildings as short as possible. And so it just kind of, it felt was a little bit of a limitation there with the size of the upper-story private area that would be required, so that that was the reason for that variance. And again, the outdoor recreation area, where he's proposing about four thousand square feet of outdoor recreation area, and we just need to show exactly the amenities in that. I would, I guess, propose that we do that. I mean, if you approve this, and we hope you will, that the landscape plan would show some of those additional details in addition to the landscaping that's being requested. I don't know, Nick, if you could maybe bring up that other plan that I sent, I can just kind of show that for benefit of view all, as well as the public can see that as well Not the clearest, oh, is this the new plan? Oh, there we go.
I think it is.
Yeah, that looks like it, yeah. So, yeah, so what we're talking about is that the upper setback area to the east, and there's a couple of properties there that this parking would be a budding. And so what we've done is kind of just shifted everything, all those spaces along there to the south. I think they did lose a space in that area. It previously shown some, a couple more compact spaces. So we've kind of reduced the number of compact spaces a little bit proportionately. He did confirm that the, part of the reason he had initially opposed it the way it is is to provide as much turning room at the end of that island as possible. And he did confirm with the fire department that this would be sufficient. So he felt comfortable that, you know, project could function adequately and provide a little additional setback room by just shifting things down. He lost a couple of spaces at the corners there, right by where the first units are. So in total, there was a change of eight spaces. So there was originally forty-five spaces and now this plan has thirty-seven parking spaces of standard spaces, compact, some in the garages and the required two ADA spaces there at the, still in the same general location. Let's see. I think that's what I would, you know, was planning to go through, and I don't know how to answer, gladly answer any questions or entertain any questions you might have.
I have two questions. Would your, the applicant, since you're representing, be willing to plant larger trees along the east fence line and?
I think that's reasonable. I mean, so he's proposing arbor vida there.
Right.
I mean, I would think it would be reasonable to spec five or six-foot arbor vida, and if they're, you know, deciduous trees, inch and a half to inch and three-quarter size, you know? I mean, he wants to make it nice and, yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem.
And the area, is that going to be enclosed and separate from the rest of the recreational area?
Well, that's, I think that's the detail he needs to really think about and how that's going to look. So I guess my hope is that we either can come back with some more details at the next meeting or the planning commission would be willing to condition it to require additional details that be reviewed by staff as part of the landscape plan review. I don't want to speak too much for him, and he happened, he was unfortunately out of town for this meeting.
Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I know the pet area is just semantic, meaning you could just draw a line through it, right? But I was curious, since it's not required anyways, why not plant trees along the fence line where the pet area is, just to create more of a buffer? Now, the neighbors may have a different idea, but in a lot of the cases that we see, people want some kind of a barrier between them and the development, and a lot of them don't mind the trees. It's really a personal, individual choice, and I can't really speak for the neighbors, but.
Right.
I don't know if that's a thought or a consideration.
I mean, we could, I can talk to him about that. And I mean, he definitely wants to make sure that the project is fenced, you know, so there's an inside and an outside to the project. So if the fence along that east side needs to be repaired or redone, I think he would like to do that, you know, and put it on his side of the line, so to speak. But we can, I can talk to him about other landscaping.
Yeah, I'm actually happy to see the parking. It is more than I think you need, but I don't have very many friends that don't require both people in the household to work in order to earn a living in. And they don't usually work at the same place, so that's two per household, right? And then, I gotta say, the majority of my friends, they're not using the garage for a garage, so that almost disappears. And so basically what you've got here is you've got some that not only meets the needs, but has that extra parking to the east that will allow them to have a visitor, right?
Right.
Forbid a friend might come by, you know, or a visitor, that would make it social. And so, yeah, I kind of like seeing it, but it's like, like we were saying, it's not a requirement.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like, in talking to Nick, you know, to tell you the truth, I didn't know anything about that requirement until just the other day when I read the staff report and then I talked to Nick about it. And it seems like there's a, you know, a size limit that says, you know, below seven hundred or fifty square feet or something like that, you don't need any parking for that unit. You know, I think it's reasonable that, that, you know, it could have a couple in it, you know, with a car or two and certainly in.
Yeah, when we, when we don't have enough parking, which I think we're going to have a problem with in the future, it overflows into the neighbor areas and they're usually not very happy about it.
Yeah, I mean, part of the challenge of this site is, good or for bad, their overflow is a long ways away.
It is.
It's pretty, it's a little bit of an island, so somebody would have to walk several blocks, but if you have to park somewhere, that's what you're going to do, right?
Other questions? Just a comment, when we're looking at several variances and setbacks in infill development with residential, you know, on sides of it, it's really helpful to have the landscape plan and lighting plan and all of those things when you have to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's, we don't really like putting that on staff later to figure that out. When you're looking at, you know, granting a variance and the neighbors are here, it's really helpful to say, okay, this is what it's going to look like. It's just a helpful piece. Just a suggestion.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilcox? Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
This was actually, maybe my question to staff, but since you mentioned it, you mentioned unit 106, and that has a full-size, one-bedroom apartment on the second floor. So I question why that wasn't counted in the density collection, in the density calculation? And if it's left as is, how do you envision that being used as another long unit or what was the thinking behind that?
So you're saying in the one apart, one building that has the, only one unit in it?
Unit 106.
Yeah. I mean, it's my understanding, it wouldn't be a second, another unit. It would be, it would be empty space. So there would be only a total of 15 units.
But it's, but it's on the floor plan, you got a one-bedroom apartment, it's gonna be sitting empty?
Yeah, he won't, he won't be able to lease that out or rent it because there's only provision for 15 units. So it'll be, it won't be finished up there. It will be unfinished attic space essentially.
Oh, really? Oh, interesting. Okay. Another major hurdle I had is 205 has an external stairway. And, you know, when, not if, you get an ice storm, those people are gonna be totally isolated in the upper unit. So I have a serious problem with that. And what kind of redesign will be required to get this staircase inside? I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk to the owner about that. I mean, he is pretty familiar with the area. So, and that's something he needs to consider. Part of the reason I think he did it that way is he wants to make sure that that ground floor unit is accessible, you know, fully accessible. So it was kind of a, an odd unit a little bit. And it's a little bit wider with that re, you know, design in mind. But, yeah, I mean, it is a consideration.
Okay, one other thing that you talked about was garage space. I don't know who wrote the applicant narrative, but there is a reference in there of saying there would be lease language saying that garages are for parking and not for personal storage. We live in HOA, that's actually in the CCNRs.
I see.
And it's why they adore it.
Right.
But I'm just saying, you know, if they can make sure that garages aren't used for storage, preserve eight parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I wrote the narrative. I mean, I don't remember writing that exactly, but I, whatever was in there, I wrote. Also, I'll take, I guess, credit for that. I mean, like, yeah, like you said, his experience and how are they enforced, really? And as a rental, it is probably easier to enforce than it is in an HOA, which is just a civil matter, yeah.
Okay, on the subject of parking, just one more thing. Would it be accurate to say that the the ground unit tenants essentially have two, two assigned parking spaces? They have a garage space and then a drive, parking space.
Right, yep. Yeah.
Just, just wanted to make sure that wouldn't give it to somebody else and trap them in a...
No, that would be associated with that unit. And, you know, on the kind of revised plan, we didn't number all those spaces, but on the original plan, they were all numbered and accounted for.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I, I guess, just a question I had.
Yes.
So will I have an opportunity, if necessary, to speak after the public testimony in rebuttal?
You, you will. And again, we'll probably continue the hearing.
Right, that makes sense, okay, all right.
Unless you're opposed to that.
No, I think that seems fine.
All right. I think, take a five-minute break. And then we'll do testimony. That be okay with everyone? Okay, so we will reconvene at 8:41.
We were two.
Faster than I thought of it.
I'm glad for it.
And I trip them up on the fence.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We are back in session. And at this time, are there any proponents to the application wishing to speak this evening? Okay. Proponent?
In favor of.
In favor of? Okay. Any opponents wishing to speak this evening? Okay, could you come forward, sir?
And did you happen to fill out a little card?
Yeah, did you fill out a card?
I did not.
Uh oh, could you please?
Yeah, you can come up and speak at the table and after, could you fill out a card?
Yeah, fill that out afterwards. And if you could state your name and address for the right.
My name is Travis Corella, and I live at 1320 Southwest 257th. I own two properties there. I've been there approximately 37 years. And my concern is, of course, the value that, that, you know, being closer, any foot closer is going to lower the value of my property. I don't even want that, the identity there, but it's going to happen. So I'm hoping to not give variance because it is going to affect the land value. Even though he says it doesn't, you can ask any realtor, they'll tell you it will. I've talked to all the neighbors that are directly connected to it. We all feel basically the same. And as far as the pet area goes, on the back, there's three families that have joined that that will be directly affected that have dogs and animals of their own. So having pets back there is going to disturb their pets. Which, you know, if somebody lived there and had a pet, it'd be the same way, kind of, but multiple pets going back there is going to cause disturbance. Just, I think everybody feels the same way from after talking to them that we just don't want it pushed any closer than we possibly have to. I mean, we just, this, this is our home. We've all been there a long time. And feel like this is getting kind of pushed down our throats a little bit. And not to mention the traffic it's going to cause, that's another issue, but. Yeah, I, are these rentals or are these like for sale? And if they're rentals, that even makes it worse on our value, of course. And that's what a realtor would tell you. So are they, I don't know whether these are going to be for sale or if they're, they say apartments, I assume that's a rental then. And can it turn to section eight later on? I mean, I know every city has to have a certain amount of section eight, but nobody wants it by them. So where, what, what are the answers to that? Can it be section eight later? The Troutdale Terrace is an example. We know that's, that's, a lot of stuff goes on there that's undesirable. You know, a lot of police activity, things like that. And so that's one of mine and all the neighbors is worried. Is it going to turn into one of those deals? I mean, I know it's not that many units, but still, it just, when they're rentals, things happen. We're concerned about our, our area.
Well, I would say that you, you never know what the future is going to bring. And this body can't dictate if something is market rate or section eight or what executive housing or whatever it is. We simply look at the zoning for the property and if the development fits into that package, that's what we're looking at. This is being presented as a market rate development.
Okay. Now, the other thing I saw, I said staff recommendations as Nick was going through it. What, who is the staff that recommended those recommendations?
The City of Troutdale Planning Staff.
You guys?
No.
Oh, okay.
So Nick, over here is our assistant planner and then America Palmer, I'm the planning director.
Okay. I think those are the most, I mean, I got all kinds of questions. I should have wrote them down probably, but. Oh, another thing is like, you said we'll have another meeting. Nobody rece, after the first meeting was canceled, no neighbors received a written notice of this meeting today, tonight. Which could we get that written mailed to us and the next one's going to be? Because all they did is put a little sign out front, nobody knew it, but I took and made up a flyer and put it around. And if I, if I get a mailed notice and nobody else does, I'll do that again, but I think everybody should have a fair shot at being here and adequate time to plan to be here.
So, you know, state procedures for continuing, for continuing a hearing. The city, we don't have to send out, we don't have to re-notice. So would we continue the hearing to a date certain tonight? That's the only notification people will, will receive.
Nobody, you won't mail it out? So that doesn't seem like it gives a fair shot at the community to give their input. So that's my feeling about that. So, yeah, I don't, I think that everybody should have a fair opportunity to speak their piece like we are here tonight doing. So is there any way we can, that can be worked with to where?
So we will have the information.
As a courtesy?
Yeah, we, we do put it up on our website. You know, I always tell people to go to our website to look to see what public hearings are going to be happening in the future. If they're interested in learning about redevelopment that's happening.
Okay. All right, and then the, the traffic survey is a different issue, right? Than this, the traffic survey that's been done recently?
What's your question or your comment?
I'm wondering where the driveway is going to be exactly, how many feet from each driveway? I kind of read about it and I didn't understand it real well. I mean, is the, the driveway is not going to be where it's at now, right, to the opening of the property? Are you familiar with it? Okay, so is it going to be moved and how far down and? It'll be one driveway, correct? That's what my understanding was? Okay.
It'll be one driveway and that's, that, that location is determined by Moenhemme County.
Okay, and I got that. I just didn't quite understand all, I'm not a, I don't know the codes and whatnot as they put it, so. Okay, well, I just want to express those concerns for now and then if we have another meeting, I'll write it down next time. That'd be better. Also, something that Mr. Allen mentioned is that there's an excessive amount of parking. Why couldn't we tighten that up and give those variances, not worry about the variances? Is there a way to do that? I mean, that's my thinking is that if there's more than adequate parking, couldn't we tighten things up and not worry about the variances? I'm just thinking that, you know, anything.
Reduce the parking?
Yeah, so that you didn't need the variances. I don't know if that's feasible. I don't know anything about building, but it seems to me if there's extra room. You know, that would be something that could maybe thought about.
That, that is an option.
Okay, great.
You know, so, I mean, you could probably do most of this development without variances if you reduced the parking. I, I would say, you know, you can also have an issue with spillover into the neighborhood.
Yeah, and we don't want that either. That'd be dangerous because everybody'd be crossing 257th on foot. Yeah, we're just, I want everybody to know, we feel very strongly about these variances not happening because, you know, we don't want to be crowded.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to testify as an opponent to the application this evening?
I have some questions. I have a little card, so I can do that as well. I'm Nick Rector. I'm at 1455 Southwest Wright Place, so I'm on the east side property line.
Okay.
I do have a water line easement on my property, so I don't know what the plan is to access that. I, I, when I bought the lot, it was, it was determined that it was for that apartment complex, so I don't know if the builder has a plan or if there's to be a plan or that it could be included in the plan as to how that is going to be accessed. Obviously, my fence is going to have to be torn down. There's going to have to be a trench that goes to my property and it needs to be repaired, of course, too. So I want to make sure that that's specified in the plan of some sort.
I read that a water supply was going to be abandoned. And a new connection was going to be done on that site. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, I'm looking at that now, too. Applicant shall abandon the existing water service to the site as directed by and in collaboration with city forces.
Does that mean we're going right off of 257th then?
I, I wouldn't know off the top of my head. I'd have to reach out to Public Works to see where they identify the water is going to come from.
But wherever it's coming from now will be, that will not be where the water is coming from, is the way I understand it.
Okay. Is there a well on that property? Another question?
No, I don't think.
Yeah, there was. Right.
Yeah, and that's pretty standard language, just in, you know.
In case you find one.
Yeah.
Hello.
Is there some follow-up that could be done? Like, could I contact, or could I contact Nick or someone and just verify that? Okay. And then other question I had, and I just want to make sure I fully understand, so this, this plan that was set up there, is this the new proposed plan? So you mentioned there.
That's, that's the half of it. So this new plan will be up on the city's website tomorrow under the application page, but this is the new plan. And I can give this to you this evening.
Okay. So on the new plan, so I think Tracy mentioned that they were going to move back some of the parking spaces on the west side. Is my understanding correct? On the east side?
On the, on the east side.
Yes, sorry, on the east side, that it was going to be moved further towards the west. So is that going to basically eliminate the second variance entirely so that the true setback will be 20 feet?
No, instead of a 10-foot variance, it'd be a five-foot variance, is the way I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
A five, so it'd be 15 feet from the east property line?
Correct, right.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of that and, I mean, I, of course, I prefer living there, would prefer it to be the full 20 feet. Because you got the garbage can, that's my biggest concern. I don't want any, you know, stench in my backyard or anything like that. I, I am glad to hear there's a fence along the, the dumpster there, so. Of course, that would be my proposal is just to, to keep that even further away from the property line over there. I think that's it.
Yeah, the dumpster is 15 feet back.
15 feet, okay. I know, comment was made about, a little bit of a concern made about abutting a current fence, a friendly neighbor fence along the existing fences. I certainly would like to see an additional fence there as per the original plan that Tracy provided and are provided, of course, too, so that all sounds good. That is all I have. Thank you.
I think I could connect to your public works to figure out where the water is going to come from. I, I know, I think your property is the one of the easement, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I can reach out.
Okay, that'd be great.
And that's counsel that would vacate that if it wasn't needed, right? That'd go before.
No, it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to. It's, it's private and not public.
Excellent, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anyone else wishing to testify as an opponent to the application?
No, we're just, just here to support the Travis.
All right. Okay, this.
You can call the applicant back up.
And the gentleman needs to fill out a card.
Right. Did the applicant want to rebut at this time or did you want to wait for the continuance?
I think we can just wait.
Okay. All right.
The continuance be on the website.
You'll know before you leave tonight on this.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay, at this time, based on the testimony and the information that we received today regarding case file LU 0014-2024, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to date certain of October 30th, 2024.
Commissioner Andrews, ISO move.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for case file LU 0014-2024 to date certain of October 30th, 2024. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Prigge?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Saffensen?
Yes. Okay, that item will be heard again on October 30th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure everyone was.
Leaving.
Out of the room. So staff communications, I have a couple of updates. First and foremost, tomorrow is our groundbreaking ceremony for the Sandy River Trail Project. It will be at 1:30 in the afternoon on the northern end of the project near the I-84 bridge. And then at 2 o'clock is the ribbon cutting grand opening for the Chalk Chalk Trail just north of that site. It's about a three-minute walk, so we hope to do the groundbreaking and then walk up to the ribbon cutting and meet the port and metro staff for that project. TCAB meets next week, next Thursday. And then the Historic Landmarks Committee also meets later this month. And then, I know last month, we, we shared with you the Main Streets on Halsey Street Design Concept Plan. And that went to council last night and council accepted the resolution for that plan.
Easy, before you get excited, it was a little better plan than we saw.
It's a concept.
Yes, but it was a better concept than the one we saw. It, it got better.
More like guidelines.
Yes.
More, yes.
Guidelines.
Guidelines.
Well, like three lanes at mic minimums and some other things that were kind of important, kind of in between.
Nice, lighted covered bus stop would be nice.
Yep.
Because all I see, I'm sorry, but in Troutdale, there, there's one.
I know.
Down there by the outlet mall. That's the only one on 257th, and the wind just howls through there. So you're stepping on one of those little things. And the wind's blowing.
Yeah.
Hopefully you don't, hopefully you don't get stuck to it.
I've never had the bus drive by me, but I've seen it happen to other people where just a guy walked by and didn't see it.
Yeah, they don't see it.
As the bus runs frequently, it's a problem.
Touch it the next hour.
And so our next planning commission meeting date will be October 30th of this month. We'll continue, we'll have this, the continuance of this hearing that we had tonight. And then we'll also have the Development Code Amendment Package as well.
I'm excited. I'm so excited.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it for me.
Okay.
Unless, Nick, do you have anything to add?
I don't. I think you did a great job.
I think you did a great job.
Get out of here.
Okay, here we go. Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good group here. And I do want to recognize that I do appreciate Commissioner Wilcox's research and brings up good points. So I liked your comments today. Thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing?
Please vote. It's not a privilege, it's a right, so please vote. I don't care how you vote, just vote, because your vote does count. That's all I have. Oh, and thank you all. Got a good group here. Staff especially, I mean, 200 pages is a lot. And I'm glad I could read it all and not have to flip a piece of paper. So, thank you for your hard work.
And so a portion of these guys want to move on to greener pastures.
Yeah. The bayou and all those.
I was going to mention, you know, you had an email exchange with Joe Storage Chief today regarding the signed campaign signs. And since those regulations are on the Development Code, it figures appropriate to bring it before this committee. The issue I was raising was, he reiterated that there's no more than three signs allowed per yard. But it wasn't clear whether those were three signs for the same candidate or three different candidates. His interpretation was that it was three signs for the same candidate. And I would argue the opposite.
Well, I would, so we don't regulate sign content at all. So those signs could say anything. So staff's interpretation would be you can have three signs on the property and that's all you get. Because that's what the code says. It could be, they could be all for the same candidate or different candidates. It's the number that counts and not the content on the sign itself.
So you have, so you have a campaign sign and a garage sign?
Yep.
Now, that, that's interesting, isn't it? What, does size of property matter? Or is it just per yard?
Per parcel.
Per parcel. And now is there a limit to size?
We do have size, sign size limitations for temporary signs.
I just want to make sure because somebody could put up one of these, you know, huge. Yep.
For the standard square foot sign, you could do that for free. But there were some, there was a candidate on the, by Derek Wingman that had more than three of their signs on that property.
So it's interesting, so I've done, I've done documents before where I've done a development on multiple parcels. And I had the choice with the county whether I wanted to combine those parcels into one parcel or keep it separate. It kind of makes the calculation real hard to do unless you actually know where all the parcels are.
Oh, it's not hard to figure out where the parcels are.
Well, I mean, you can look on the county side, right?
Yeah. It's easy enough.
But Paul, did I clarify your question?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's all I have, thank you. Nothing further from you?
I'll just say regarding signs, I actually brought it up to the council because I had some people contact me about it and it's been kind of a difficult year for signs for some reason. It ended up here, kind of here, there and everywhere. And it's, it's become a bit of an issue, so it's probably going to be something that we talk about again.
Now, is there a length of time that they have to?
90 days.
90 days?
Yeah.
Unless someone rolls them down, we don't have to worry.
All my signs were legal except for one. I lost, I had one put again and it was because Halsey does not run. Right of way is not open to center of Halsey. Halsey runs on the northern side of its right of way, so the southern side, there's a lot more right of way. And my sign was approaching the right of way actually at 44th and Halsey, even though it sat way back off the road.
Interesting.
Are they going to take down more signs? Did you know?
I think it's complaint driven, isn't it?
It's complaint driven and I believe, I know that Joe went out, our Joe Storage, our code compliance officer, went out yesterday and today. And we resolved the complaints that came in, so I don't think he's going to be going out again.
Unless. Something comes, somebody calls.
Correct.
Yeah, according to staff, your sentence.
Well, because they shouldn't be on public property, I believe, at all.
On him, the email today, he specified.
Correct. Temporary, yeah, temporary signs shouldn't be in the right of way or, you know, in public, public property parks.
So I guess, yeah, so I guess my question would be, is he going to make a, a sweep and get the ones that are in on public property? Just to be consistent?
Most, most likely.
But there's still some out there.
That'd be affirmative.
Oh, okay.
Would the parking strip, like, I'm in charge of the sidewalk and I have a parking strip?
Yeah, so the parking strip is usually a part of the right of way.
Okay, because I just want to make sure, because anybody wants to post sign up, I, I'm sorry. Okay.
Well, I got a, I got a call from somebody who's pretty upset about a sign in the right of way in front of their property. But I'm not a counselor anymore and it wasn't my sign, it wasn't my property. So I told him it's complaint driven. If he wanted to do something, he had to tell the city.
They kind of become a thing.
Well, I hope they're gone because when the east wind blows down 26, I get a few every, occasionally.
Well, then your trash is full.
I try to recycle.
They'll collect at the end of the street.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for their time and all the work on this. This is a big project. And we will finish this off on October 30th. So thank you, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.